Good evening, everybody. It is 6:34 on Thursday, April 25th. I state the date because this is subject to replays on ACMI. So on demand, you can see this anytime and play it three or four times because it's a wonderful meeting. Our first item of business is a public hearing on school choice. This is a mandate by state law. And under the state law, I will note that what our policy is, it's the policy of the school district not to admit non-resident students under the terms and conditions of the inter-district school choice law, MGL 7612. The decision must be reaffirmed annually prior to June 1st by a vote of the school committee following a public hearing, and that's what we are doing right now. We have only one member of the public sort of in the audience, and that's Mr. Jangor. So I doubt he's here for the public hearing. Is there anybody on Zoom who is, wants to avail themselves of the rights under this public hearing to comment on our participation under school choice? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion to notify the Department of Education. To notify the Department of Education, the Arlington Public Schools will not participate in the school choice program due to lack of space in the district.
All moved?
Moved by Ms. Exton, seconded by Dr. Allison Ampe. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That is unanimous, 5-0 vote. Thank you very much. Next up is public comment. We don't have any public in the room, and I don't see anybody on Zoom, so we can bypass public comment. And from there, we head on to the next agenda item, AHS student representatives to the school committee. And for that, we have Mo Hagen Blue and Amy Kilaru.
Thank you. All right. Today was the last round of our inclusion and diversity workshops, at least from my experience and from all those what I've heard. It was really well. It went really well. The keynote speaker was awesome. Thank you, Dr. Jangor, I think, for getting it. Awesome. We had a Mario Kart tournament.
A what tournament?
Mario Kart.
Oh, Mario Kart. Cool.
And there was 50-plus students and staff who participated. It was really fun. We're glad to do something like that. There was an ongoing prom dress drive going on, and the course in orchestra had their trip to Carnegie Hall. Do you know when they perform?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night's the performance. Junior prom is tomorrow. That's happening. Things are well, I think. I don't really know. I'm not a junior. And EcoFair is happening May 10th, so get excited. Same thing as last year. There'll be snacks, booths, all that, and music.
So what do you do at an EcoFair?
So EcoFair is a bunch of AHS students who are into the Students Against Violations of the Environment Club, the Gardening Club, Sustainability Club, all coming together with local environmental organizations like Black Earth Compost and Full Circle Compost. They're trying to raise awareness for environmental problems and kind of just rally people, town support for environmental causes. So there's going to be local businesses there, like solar companies there, and even baby goats.
Baby goats? How cool is that? Okay. Anything else, guys? Thank you. Next, the heterogeneous grouping presentation. Dr. Jangor.
So this, can you hear me? So this is a relatively short presentation. We have a couple of new data points to present, then a quick recap of kind of where we are and how we got to where we are today, and then our recommendation for plans going forward. So if you want to scroll down. So just to remind, and most of you have been here for the whole ride, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but this conversation about this particular pilot started during the COVID years when we had heterogeneous grouping actually in almost all of our ninth and 10th grade classes. At the end of that year, we looked at a lot of the different practices that we had done during COVID and wanted to see if there were any lessons learned or things that we wanted to continue forward. And there was a lot of positive feedback about heterogeneous grouping as being an effective and more equitable approach to teaching students. So we then engaged in a research and study year, which went for the 21-22 year. That study group met roughly 10 times, then held a number of community forums, and finally made the proposal to make a pilot in English IX of heterogenously grouped English. And heterogenously grouped, for folks listening at home, means that all of the students in the particular class, because this is a required grade class, take the same class, but students can choose the level of curriculum challenge that they're going to take on. Since that time, we have then made numerous presentations tracking the progress and continued to have conversations about that, and that leads us to today's meeting in which we're going to make a recommendation for next year. So scrolling up. The outcomes and evaluation that we have been monitoring have been levels of participation in the honors level curriculum, students' grades in the curriculum, as well as surveys of students' experiences in the classes. We're also tracking future enrollment in honors, which is something we'll probably want to look at more closely over the summer because it's a complicated picture, and present on future as part of a larger conversation about leveling practices and participation. And we will be able to look a little bit to see whether we're seeing achievement scores on the MCAS in English going up or down, how, of course, accepting that that's somewhat overdetermined. There's a lot of factors that are going to contribute to that other than the ninth-grade English setup. So scrolling down. So here's what we have found. The picture is a little easier to see, and then you can get the actual numbers when you look at the chart, which is the next slide. But as you can see, honors-level participation has been consistently higher in the years during which we've had the heterogenously grouped English. So the comparison years we've chosen are the year before and the year after the COVID experience. That's 2020 and 2022. And if you look at then the next two bars and the last two bars, those are semester one and semester two. And the reason both of those are there is because students in this program can switch levels in the middle of the year. We've had 17 more students opt to move up into honors at the semester break. So the current, if you can scroll down so I can remember the exact number. Yep. So if you see, the current percentage is 76% of the freshman class is participating in honors-level curriculum. And if you go back to the pre-heterogeneous grouping years, that's compared to slightly under 50% in the past. So that's a pretty substantial outcome in terms of students participating in higher level curriculum, getting more opportunities in terms of having transcripts that are going to look a lot more positive post-secondary. So one of the questions, though, would be whether there is a problem with grade inflation or a problem with students not being successful. So we've been monitoring students' grades. You can scroll to the next slide. If you remember, at the end of the first quarter of this year, grades were actually a tick down. The students have recovered since then. We've also cleaned up the data a little bit when we looked at it in the middle of the year. And so as you can see, the grades currently are slightly up. My basic argument would be that grades are the same, that we're not seeing that grades are dropping, we're not seeing that performance is dropping. And one of the things that then we ask is what's going on with the standards in the classes? And one of the things that we've been really careful about in this program, the teachers have been meeting as part of common planning, the teachers have been comparing their work, they're measuring students against the same standards on the same curriculum. So these grades are reliable measures inasmuch as grades are a measure of student learning. So the bottom line is what we have seen over these last one and three-quarter years is significantly increased participation honors-level curriculum. We've seen that as a positive impact across all the demographic focal groups, and then maintained grades and participation, again, across all of the focal groups. Scrolling on, so that's just the numbers. So just as a reminder of why we are doing this. So the biggest reason is because inclusion is a primary value, and equity is a primary value of the Arlington Public Schools. The legally, ethically, and professionally, having students in the least restrictive environment and included and grouped together as much as possible is what we try to do. Now, there are times when if students are taking content for which they don't have prerequisite knowledge or that they don't need to take, there may be diversions of the students. But in these levels where it's possible to do this as much as possible, we're committed to inclusion. We had evidence of effectiveness during the pre-pilot years that led, and we had evidence of disproportionality, not only in participation, in grades, but in student experience. And we believe, and we've seen some evidence of these equity and mindset improvements for students, because what we are saying to students is that we believe that more of them can achieve at a high level, and we are seeing that in the fact that more students are participating. And lastly, heterogeneous grouping, just to remind people, is not a novel practice in Arlington. Heterogeneous grouping is practiced in a lot of junior and senior classes, a lot of standalone classes, so teachers have experience with it. Our systems are experienced with it. It's something that's reflected in our GPA and grading practices. So we can scroll past that. That's just a reminder of what we went through to set up for this. So where are we now? Can you scroll down one slide? I think they're in the wrong order. No, go down. Go down one more. Yep. So yeah, go up one more. That's where I want to be. Nicole was right, they're in the wrong order. So what do we want to do? So first, we are asking to continue this practice in ninth-grade English for next year. We think it's been successful, the students, the teachers are prepared to do it, and that's something we want to continue doing. And then what do we want to do going beyond that? We are already doing what we're calling enlarging the conversation. The English IX teachers had a panel with all of the school at our last staff meeting, and we talked about how honors expectations and leveling practices and grading practices can be aligned to create more equitable outcomes and the impacts they're having. There are a lot of directions in which that conversation can go. It's something that ties into our strategic plan, it ties into our work around equity, it ties into our work around deeper learning and academic conversations. Obviously, as part of this process, we also want to complete the pilot evaluation. So over the summer, we're going to be obviously gathering the final grades for 2024. We are conducting the spring panorama survey. We're doing a parent survey, which parallels that. We've added some questions into the panorama survey and the parent survey that get at some questions that we had last time we did the panorama survey around engagement and teacher expectations. And obviously, we're going to track this question of future enrollment in honors and achievement in MCAS scores. So if you scroll up. So when we enlarge the conversation, this ties this small pilot into all of the work that we're doing right now. So, you know, a reminder that with the strategic plan, with the working groups, with the work of our ILT, things that we have been working on in different places around the school are belonging in SEL, deeper learning, academic conversations with the staff, reading the book and doing learning walks around the book in order to create interdisciplinary conversations, and more conversations about how we can increase inclusive grouping. So one of the things that we did at our last faculty meeting and that we're going to do at our next faculty meeting as we finish up the learning walks and that the ILT is going to do over the spring and the course of the summer, is to plan our PD and our conversations so that we are bringing these threads all together in terms of creating more equitable options. So now scroll down, too. So these are just examples of ideas for PD groups and working groups that have been proposed for the next year. That conversation will be refined. But for example, looking at aligning expectations for honors and A grading and curriculum across the grade nine and within disciplines. So one of the things that this process has surfaced is that we need to be really clear about what honors and A expectations are, that when they are aligned equitably, you will get better outcomes for students at both levels, and you have more opportunities for students to move back and forth. Looking at equity impacts of different departmental leveling and tracking practices. And so we've looking at other ways to increase participation of all students, and both within the focal groups, of upper-level curriculum as appropriate. And then one of the things that we've been working on this year is to look at the explicit teaching and practicing of academic conversations within the department, which is a deeper learning focus, and then explicit teaching of things like SEL and executive functioning. So that's the whole presentation. Those are just some sort of key resources as I posed these things. If people are looking to go deeper into any of the data or into any of the things, they can go back through the data that we have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? Dr. Allison Ampe.
Hi. Thank you, Dr. Jangor, for your presentation. So first, I am in favor of continuing the program as, or the pilot as you've outlined, but I'm just wondering when we're going to get some of this important feedback and actually see it, because I know we've kind of been waiting for it for a while, specifically the parent survey, the panorama survey, and also the future, how people have been doing in terms of 10th-grade enrollment in honors courses, because we brought that up in October. And, you know, you have at least one year where we could look at it and say what it looks like versus back in 2020 or 2022.
So last spring, I presented on the panorama data and the parent survey data. And in the fall, we explained that 65% of students are doing honors in English X right now.
Okay. It was not in a slide that I'm aware, because I've got notes from then that Mr. Schuckman had asked about it. So I think we'd like to see, that's part of the information I think we'd like to see going forward.
Sure.
Just to show how it's made a difference. But I know that we had the survey last year. I think there were concerns that it didn't necessarily get at how parents, how some parents felt about whether the honors was challenging their student enough. And I think that's always been the question about this entire pilot, and so I'm hoping that we can get some answers about that. Thank you.
We can try to present on this again, and we can go deeper into it, but the panorama survey asked these questions, right? If you go back, I need to figure out which of these slides to pull up. But if you go back to the spring data that was presented to the school committee last year, which I'm pulling up now.
It was in June.
Yep. So if you go back to this spring data, the panorama survey, we have students reporting positive classroom climate, pedagogical effectiveness, rigorous expectations, teacher and student relationships, classroom mindset and classroom belonging. Those are all unchanged from previous years, and those are all in the upper percentiles compared to other classroom surveys at the high school level.
It's especially the parent data that I'm interested in.
I can report on the parent data. I will say that the response rates amongst the parents were pretty low, but we will, we are submitting a survey this year where we're asking those questions. We will get that information.
Okay.
And we'll have that for you. I'll leave this on the phone.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Ms. Morgan.
So I have a question about the, I appreciate all the data, and my interest has often, well, always been on sort of what this actually looks like in practice, like how does this look and feel in the classroom? So if there were students, so students are in a heterogeneous English class, and they have been assigned a group project, and there are students in that group who are taking the class for both honors credit and Curriculum A credit, and those students in that group are being graded on a different rubric because ones, like, some of them are taking it for Curriculum A and some of them are taking it for Curriculum H. How does that work when you're doing group work?
Nicole, do you want to answer that question?
So I think it depends on how, what the assignment is and what the requirements are for those, for that particular assignment, as well as how the grouping is happening. So if, being strategic about whether children, students are choosing their own groups, if they're being put into different groups, I know for different assignments, we do it different ways in terms of the grouping. And then for, sometimes there's, there's other components, like, for example, I'll have, are you talking for specifically for like a group project, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think it, there'll be different components for it. So for example, if I had, you know, maybe, maybe if you're doing it for A level, you're, you're answering perhaps a different prompt, like if they're doing an artist, let's say they're doing an artist statement, right? Like, I usually have them, if they're putting some sort of creative project, they're each working on the creative project in a certain way, but I always have them do an individual component, like an artist statement, which would be an analysis of their, of their work. And that prompt would look, for my class, like that prompt would look different. It would ask them to be doing, and I would be asking to assess certain things, not more work, same level of works, like same page. I mean, it may come out to be a little bit longer or a little bit shorter, depending on conciseness of the writer, but the question and the prompt would be different. Like, I'd have them look for different things, or I'd have to be pulling in multiple sources if you were perhaps doing it for honors level, where you're working with one source in that artist statement if you're, if you're A level. Does, does that make sense? I usually, I have like an individual component with the overall. I don't know if that answers your question.
And I don't, you know, it's not necessarily that everybody certainly does it the same way, right? I guess the feedback that I would provide as somebody who does spend a lot of time with a variety of ninth graders is that the group, the group work is really, is really tricky in terms of how it's ultimately assessed and evaluated. I have heard from students, they've said, well, you know, I was doing this project, and so-and-so is taking the class for Curriculum A, and they didn't have to do this part of the group project, so they just didn't do it. So I had to do all of it. And so the reaction of the student was like, I don't ever want to work again with somebody who's taking the class for Curriculum A credit, because I ended up having to do all of this stuff so that I could meet the criteria for this grade, which is like 100% not the outcome we want to have, right? Like, that's not, but, but you can, you can see how 15-year-olds, when they look at something and like these, you know, group work in a class where 75% of the students are taking it for honors credit, and there is this contingent that's not, but we want to have, the whole point is that group work is heterogeneous, right? That you have, that 25% of the members of your group are taking it, are, you know, so that is something that, just in talking to students this year especially, has sort of stood out to me as an, as an area where more conversations could happen, or it, it just feels really tricky when, in a lot of the situations, the sort of, the difference between the levels, which is not the focus of the pilot, right? But it, but the, the difference is like, oh, well, you get more points for this, or the rubric looks like this, or whatever. It becomes very tricky when you have kids across levels working in groups together, when really, like, we want to make that group work, that should be where like the robust conversations are happening. And that's like part of the whole point of doing this, is that we have those heterogeneous groups, not only within the classroom, but within group cohorts as they're doing their work. And it, it's, it's tricky to figure out how to structure the assignments to do that in a way that makes sense for everybody, I guess.
Can I make a couple of comments? So I hear what you're saying, right? In group work, different expectations for different students, grading practices, are something anecdotal. I have had three kids go through the high school. I know a lot of children. It's something that's true in any class, whether the class has heterogeneous grouping or whether the class doesn't have heterogeneous grouping. And so while we will have these anecdotal things where kids will say, like, the mechanics of the grades are funny things to explain to other people, I think what's really important for us to do is to look holistically at like, what does the data say? And so if, actually, Nicole, because I can't show things on the screen, but I went back to the survey data that we have from last year, and there are two sets of slides. One is the survey data from the students, and the other is the survey data from the parents. When we ask the students in this class, how much does the behavior of other students help or hurt your learning, there is no change, right? So while sometimes other kids are annoying, sometimes things are difficult, differentiation can create stresses between kids, having kids have a growth mindset versus a competitive mindset, all of these things are challenging things. These are the realities of being a teacher, especially in an environment where we grade kids on things, you know, we don't, which is just not the joy of learning. We also sort and rate kids, and so there's that whole, you know, mechanical thing. But what we find is that the response was, one, the same, and two, seven, eight, 30, 38, so 48% of students said that the other students in the class helped their learning. That's the same as it was before. And only 3% of students say that other students in the class harmed their learning. So this is an environment where the presence of other students who are not necessarily as academically able is not hurting the vast majority of students and has not changed from the general experience of students. So that's a positive outcome when we are now giving students a more diverse experience. So then the other thing, I don't know if, Nicole, are you able to grab the heterogeneous English pilot caregiver feedback results? I just shared them with you in your email, because Liz told me that you can share them on Zoom, I can't.
Okay, I'll check.
So we had a fairly small response on that, that's only something like 50 parents out of 744. But if you look at the results that we got last year, we hadn't done a survey, so we don't have a comparison, they are generally positive. So sense of belonging, overall, how does your student feel like they belong? 56% of students, 57% of students were one or two above, so it's a five-point scale, so we're positive. If you look at classroom climate, we did it on a scale comparable to the one about other students, how positive or negative is the overall classroom climate? 17%, 38%, 19% had those all together answered positively. If you asked overall, how much does the behavior of other students hurt or help? The parents, 12%, 9%, 21% answered positively, and 12, 16% answered negatively. So the parents answering have a more negative impression than their students do, or than the students answering do. Engagement overall, we have 66% answering that their children are interested in the English class. And mindset, it's again, positive towards the growth mindset, that they can change their behavior. Rigorous expectations, you have 30, 46% answering positively, and 16% answering negatively. So overall, the response of the responding parents is towards the positive. Are there differences of opinion? Yes. Do people have different values than this in terms of how they want their students' education to go? Yes. We have to make an overall impression about whether this is better or worse, and what we're seeing is a positive impact in terms of the things that we measure and not significant negative impacts.
And I have just one follow-up question.
Go for it.
So why aren't we, so we're at a place where 75% of students are taking this for honors credit, so why aren't we here making a decision to just do an honors English class for everybody next year?
So I think there's a few reasons. One, I would start with the reason, the sort of dominating reason why we chose heterogeneous grouping. The determining factor for the study group was what was expressed by the students, which was that their preference was to be able to choose their level of challenge. So that was number one. So that was number one. Number two, a, throughout the rest of our school, we have, in the academic, in the academic strands, right, math, English, history, social studies, world language, we have levels. And those levels are represented in GPA, and they're represented in weights. That's understood by colleges, it's understood by the teachers. To have one of those classes be honors for all would be a completely different theory of sort of how we structure things. These teachers did not feel like there was an advantage, given the way they're currently teaching, which they're finding success with, in terms of going to that. They didn't think that that would be a better option than giving the students the choice, and they understand how that system works. So I think if we wanted to unlevel as a school, if we wanted to move towards an honors-for-all, unleveled model for the school as a whole, that might be a conversation to have, but that would be shifting our theory of how we do our, you know, challenge and expectations in the class.
Okay. It, I just wonder if it would be more authentic to what's actually happening in the classroom, that, like, I'm, I'm sort of increasingly uncomfortable that 25% of the students who are in English IX, who are still disproportionately students of color, students on IEPs, we, you know, there are still more of them in, they're disproportionately represented in the 25% who aren't getting the honors credit for the class. I just wonder how, if they aren't truly doing honors-level work, that we're not giving them the GPA and the credit for, like...
But I think what we've discussed is that they're not doing honors-level work, they're not being asked to do honors-level work. They're being asked to do, I mean, as, as Nicole was saying, they're being asked, the teachers have understood these at different levels and different expectations. Students clearly understand that there's a different expectation for some of those groups of students. And when those students demonstrate the capacity to do honors-level work, they switch halfway through the year, 17 students did. So for those students who are choosing, for reasons of stress and expectation, and where do they want to go, to do a college preparatory level of work, but not an honors-level of work, giving them that option is, you know, is consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Thanks. So I've been looking at the survey data that you're talking about, too, and one thing I think is, oh, shoot. I am, I think what gets to my concern is a data point where, looking at the parent survey, so first, I had a hard time correlating what the numbers meant, because I didn't realize they were referencing the panorama thing. But if you look at the rigorous expectations for the parents versus the students, the, so panorama counts anything other than encourages me quite a bit as a negative. So if you take those for the students, you get 17% of the students felt, fell in the negative bucket for encourage, does this teacher encourage you?
The panorama doesn't report anything as negative, they only report what's positive. And there's the middle, which is neutral, and then...
They're, okay, so I'm looking at their color coding them as red versus green, so that's what I meant. But the, the buckets are encourages me quite a tremendous amount, encourages me quite a bit, encourages me some, encourages me a little, does not encourage me at all. If you count, and the numbers that you were quoting before were encourages me a tremendous amount and encourages me quite a bit.
For parents.
So the other buckets total to 17%. So that's some or less. But for the parents, 42% or 43% of the parents fell into the encourages me, or encourages my student some or less. And whether they're, so that, that's the discrepancy that I'm concerned about, that this, parents are feeling that somehow the work that their students are doing isn't, I mean, this is coming under rigorous expectations, and I think it correlates with the parents' are concerned that the students aren't doing rigorous work, so that's...
So there are 50 parents who answered.
Yeah, I, I realize it's...
Of those 50 parents, they don't agree with their students.
Right.
That's an interesting finding. I, I don't know what to say about it, other than that surveys are sometimes like that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Ms. Exton?
Thanks. Thank you for this presentation. I, so, what I heard you say is you're here to sort of ask, you'd like to continue the, the pilot. I guess my question, I'm not sure it's, who it's for, but when do we get to stop calling this a pilot, and sort of, you know, ninth-grade English is heterogeneous, and I understand that you're going to look into how it might evolve from here, but, you know, we, we approved two years ago for a two-year pilot, and that's coming to an end, and so I just, as one who supports it, I would be interested in the opportunity to stop calling it a pilot, and we have heterogeneous ninth-grade English, and, you know, you and your team will continue to explore what that looks like, and all of these PD and ILT works, work that's going to continue, but something that it seems like AHS has, has been working on, and is feel successful about, and maybe a pilot is not the right name for it anymore.
I'll, I'll just follow Ms. Exton's lead, in that everything I've seen about this pilot is that it's been successful. And certainly by coming in to talk to us tonight, you're saying we should keep on doing what we're doing. So we're not going back, but how are we going forward? Is there any reason why we're not taking what we've learned in ninth-grade English and broadening it out elsewhere?
So there's two answers. I mean, one, I don't know that we, I, we are, we have not done the preparatory work in ninth-grade world history, ninth-grade physical science, which would be logical next steps. And we have not, to be perfectly honest, felt the support from the school committee for ambitiously moving it forward into 10th-grade English. We would like to continue the practice in ninth grade, and like I said, we'd like to broaden the discussion. I think for us, as we have a conversation, there is work to be done, there is good work and valuable work around honors and A-level expectations, making practices more consistent around, within terms of curriculum alignment, that will make the experience of students more equitable across the levels. That's where we want to start. That would, I think, if this committee is supportive of moving towards more inclusive grouping in the future, make that an easier move to make.
Okay.
And so that's the work that we want to do next.
Okay. Do any of our student reps want to discuss ninth-grade English? You seemed interested.
I've, I'm in a heterogeneous English class right now, and I've only found that it increases participation all around. I think people are less competitive and like watchful of what they say, which I really appreciate. I think it makes discussions a lot more interesting.
Thank you. Anything else under this agenda item? Seeing none. Let me just be remiss, at the start of the meeting, I should have announced who's here and who's not. Mr. Carden and Mr. Thielman are not with us tonight, because they've got work commitments that ran afoul of this, this meeting, and Ms. Holman, Dr. Holman is at a celebration, and our deputy superintendent, Dr. Mona Ford Walker, is here in her stead. And Jenna Mederos is here for the AEA. Which leads us back to Dr. Ford Walker, who will be presenting the, oh, we've got a finance report first. Finance report, Mr. Farias.
Point of order.
Oh, point of order, go ahead.
Do we need to approve the pilot for another year?
I don't know that we do. If you'd like to make a motion to support going forward, continuing the program, please do.
Okay, I saw move, because I'm not sure if we do or not, and at least this way we do. Do I second?
Okay. Second. Motion by Dr. Allison Ampe, seconded by Ms. Exton, to support continuing with the pilot in the ninth grade next year. Mr., Dr. Changer?
Point of clarification, are we moving forward on continuing a pilot? Are we moving forward on continuing the practice of heterogeneous English IX?
Ms. Morgan?
So I think in the past, the superintendent has brought us a recommendation that we have then voted on, right? So that's where we're, like, we don't have that on...
Agenda, yeah.
We don't have, we don't have that, right?
So I...
I mean, I, I know what her recommend...
I understood that the reason that I was coming to this meeting was to make that recommendation.
And so your recommendation is, is that we continue...
The practice of heterogeneous grouping in English IX.
The practice of heterogeneous grouping in English IX.
Correct.
And that would be your motion, Dr. Allison Ampe? Or do you want the word pilot in there?
I was looking at our agenda in case it explained, but it doesn't. Yes, I make that motion without the word pilot.
Without the, with Dr. Changer's language, to continue the practice next year. And Ms. Exton, that was your second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions, that's a unanimous six-nothing vote. Keep on keeping.
Thank you.
Five.
Five, 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 yeah, we're, and I'm a licensed math teacher in this state, problem is I can't see over in that corner. Okay. Mr. Farias, we're now to you for the real math of the night, it's the, it's the financial report, number four.
Okay, so I'm going to just start, so this will be the updated financial report as of March 31st. The most recent one we had was of March 13th, so this is more of a two, three, two, three-week update. I follow the same logic, which hopefully is easier to follow, understand. Sorry. It starts with the general fund report, and some of the, some of the columns are broken up into original budget, transfers, revised budget, expended column, encumbered, and then another column we have for projected expenditures, which is what we project to occur until the end of the year. These, this figure hasn't been posted yet, so this one can be subject to change. And the projection assumes that departments and schools are going to fully spend down their budgets. One thing I want to note, some updates you see that were reflected here compared to last month, is that some of the transfers that we recommended, excuse me, that we suggested went through, such as the transfer to the athletic fund, the anatomy revolving fund, traffic supervisors, transportation, and another one for facilities, and the one we have pending is a $200,000 for curriculum-related expenditures. One thing we, I look out for until the end of the year for now, is still the increase, the possible increase for electricity, and it's something that I do project, and I can show you down the line. And because of the transfers we, we put in place, I still expect the projection to be pretty similar to what we did last, last month, the March 14th financials. So if you go to page three, I'll skim over this, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. One thing I want to emphasize or make note of, some projected expenditures that are pretty large, will be the other stipends, which is line 510322. I projected about $120,000, which should be enough to cover some ILT stipends we have, in addition to any other stipends that haven't been processed on our end. You'll see that on page four. Another projection that I have mentioned earlier will be on page, excuse me, on page, page seven, which will be line 520628 for power electricity, and that's, I have projecting about $430,000. Just, just again, to emphasize, all of this for, object code is for the general fund expenditures. And then, starting on page, sorry, moved pretty quickly, starting at page eight, will be reports for the all revolving accounts. The revolving accounts for this, it's, it's pretty, it's, has similar columns to the object code, but the difference here is that we break it down into, excuse me, it's broken down into a couple less columns, the columns here are just budgeted amounts, actuals, encumbered, and then, and projected amount. One thing I want to emphasize is that the negative numbers on the report doesn't really, doesn't represent a deficit, it's just more about cash balances, that's where we reflect We start with athletic fees, then move down to anatomy, followed by building rentals. One thing I want to emphasize is, you'll see the projection for building rentals is still about, it's pretty high, about $400,000, and that's something we should be addressing next month or so, and that's more when we start charging rent to some of our after-school programs, in addition to community ed. After that, this is there for Pierce Field, our tuition payments, and then our foreign exchange tuition, followed by the bishop bus revolving.
Okay.
If I'm going too fast, let me know, I can slow down. Or if you have any questions, feel free.
I'll entertain questions from the committee. Ms. Morgan?
Can, if, if we have some questions about, like, how some of these, like, is it possible to get an updated report if some of the, with some of the adjustments, like, the, it looks like that the line for transfers is like $401,000, which I'm not...
Yeah.
Like, is it, is it possible to, like, do another pass-through, and then give us an updated one, just like, making sure that some of those things are reconciled, so that we can take another look at it before the next reporting?
Sure, sure, it's, just to clarify, so you want like a copy of the transfers?
Well, so, the, the 40198, or 401981, I'm not sure why that's not 400,000.
Sure, so, one thing I noticed is that, it should be 400,000, but I noticed that in our statements as of October, there was about, about 19, 1980 or so transfer there, and I'll find out what that is, and I'll can follow sometime tomorrow.
Great. So, and then if, yeah, and if that impacts any of the other areas, or if there's any other things that you're, you're kind of looking at, if we could just get sort of a fresh one of this one, so that it gives us a starting place when we look at report number four, it would be helpful.
Sure. And then after, after grants, going back to, oh, page, sorry. Starting in page, starting in page 12 is some of our grants. Some of the revenue, you'll notice, is still projected there, and that's mainly, for example, Title I, and that's mainly because we haven't drawn down the funds due to expenses. But once we started drawing those funds down, those balances started decreasing. First thing, we start with Title I, followed by 2A, Title III, some of our special education Lastly, there's, there's MECO, same thing with MECO, is, is, once we started drawing down, once we start expending the fund, we start drawing down those amounts, and so the revenue projection should go down. And then the last page, page 13, I'm sorry, excuse me, page 15, is just continuation of ESSA grant. You'll notice that the, the awarded amount will be when we first award the grant, and then I'm just tracking down the, the actuals, and the covered, and the projection of what we anticipate for the end of the year. I went back kind of fast, if you have any questions, feel free to send them my way. Sure.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so, 520518, the instructional materials line has a huge, like, 463,000 left over, which seems like a lot, when we're rolling out a new curriculum this year. And so the challenging bit is, is that we kind of need that number to be big, because there's, the bottom-line number is only 134,000, right? And I, I don't know, I, I just don't know why we're, I don't know why there's so much money left in that line item when we're rolling out a new curriculum.
Sure, can we repeat the number again, sorry, five?
Instructional materials, 520518.
Yeah, so, it's a combination of a lot of, a lot of the, the expenditures is encumbered, and we also have a deadline of when we want everything by for the end of the year, even though... though, so the hope, the hope we have with deadlines is more about hopefully everyone, everyone needs for remainder of the year gets encumbered early. And then afterwards, if there's anything late, or if there's any emergency spending, then we try to cover that. And so with this reflects here, the projection is a bit lower, mainly because we encumbered most of the funds dedicated to that object line, if that makes sense.
It makes, so it makes sense from a budgetary standpoint, kind of, what I guess I'm asking more of a like, oop, going up a little bit higher, and I'm like, hey, so we budgeted all this money for instruct, well, not all this money, we budgeted money for instructional materials that we have not spent, nor have we encumbered it.
I think Dr. Ford Walker would like to
I would, thank you. Don't worry, that money's going to be spent. We've been in the process of finalizing the instructional materials, the numbers at every grade level across the school. So our colleges have been working on finalizing the actual materials, but then also working on finalizing the platform that we're going to be using to not just access the materials, but to access some of the additional materials that come with the curriculum. And so we're just finalizing numbers, but the money's going to be spent, and the materials are going to start to be ordered middle of May.
Okay. So then, so then, now, yay, buying things, but that $463,000 positive number in there is offsetting a lot of other accounts that are negative, and the bottom line number is 134,000. So as, if we spend the whole 463, I mean, again, I'm picking on instructional materials because like they're deeply important to me, and they're so important to what we do, obviously, and it's not a place that I want to like be, I don't want to see us not spending, and if all of that gets spent, we will actually be, have, will be negative at the end of the, at the end of the year. Like, there's, so the, all of those accounts sum up to, right now, projecting 135,000 positive at the end of the year. But that's assuming that we leave $464,000 on the table for instructional materials. So once we start spending that down, something else in another, just, that's just the math, to make sure that that bottom corner is positive at the end.
We're also, we haven't processed transfer for curriculum-related expenditure for 20,000, so that 20,000 should be inclusive as well, if that makes sense. So
Well, let me ask one question, and I should know the answer to this, but I don't. I mean, we had the override, and there was, there is an adjustment for this year because we brought it in for salary negotiations for a couple of units. So has that money been drawn into the budget at this point? It's already there? Okay, fine. Okay. I just want to make sure that number was in there. And on the curriculum items, we do have the practice of replenishing our consumables within the curriculum toward the end of the year, so some of that money that's sitting in curriculum right now is for replenishment?
Yes, and let me just clarify. So, and the $200,000 that Jose is mentioning is part of a grant that the district received for high-quality instructional materials. So all of that $200,000 will go towards E L supplies and materials. In addition to, this doesn't include, once we hit the summer, right, and July 1st, and we roll over to the new year, and then there are other materials that need to be ordered with, starting then. But out of that $400,000, all of that will not be used to purchase the materials. $200,000 is earmarked, and then from there, I believe we only have access to 100,000, somewhere around there. So in terms of your other question, that will not all be used by instructional materials. I don't have the final numbers. That was something I booked to Jose to provide. Yeah. Hopefully, that's a little clearer. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We'll go on to the superintendent's report.
I'll be providing the superintendent's report for Dr. Holman this evening, and I'd like to start off by sharing an update on some of our administrative hiring searches. So currently, we have a few hiring searches that are currently in progress. We're running a search for the K-12 math director and the O M S assistant principal. We've completed the search for an assistant principal at Bishop School. We're excited to welcome Kathleen Early. Welcome to Arlington. Also, we've completed the Hardy School Principal search, which Dr. Holman shared when she was here at the last meeting, and want to, again, welcome Gretchen Saunders to Arlington. Dr. Holman will be making an announcement soon as it relates to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations search. And finally, we have an upcoming search for the Director of History and Social Studies, and we will begin that search within the next couple of weeks. We are excited to share that we've been awarded the Teacher Diversification Grant from DESI to help support our efforts to support the recruitment and retention of diverse educators. And this includes a $15,000 grant to APS to work with two local colleges to help support five to seven APS educators with emergency licensure, and as well as MTEL and other areas. And I'd like to highlight Bishop School, who had their science night last night. It was, it was a successful evening. There were a number of students and families in attendance, and they had an opportunity to engage in science, content, experiences, and have a lot of fun. We have a few upcoming events. One was mentioned already. We have our students who will be performing at Carnegie Hall tomorrow evening, students from our Performing Arts Department. Also, we have a performance of Mean Girls Junior Play, taking place at Odison Middle School tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Oh, the high school, excuse me. Also, on May 18th, we'll have our Second Annual Pride Celebration, and this will take place here at the high school, the front lawn outside. There'll be a lot of music, arts and crafts, fun and activities, and also a time to come together as a community and celebrate. And finally, Dr. Holman has updated the enrollment reports, and those are in Novus. And if you have any questions about those, please see Dr. Holman with those questions. And that concludes my superintendent's update.
Ms. Mederos.
Yeah, just real quick on Mean Girls. So the Odison Musical is actually, they had to change it to 7:30 tomorrow because of the junior prom, but it's also 7:00 on Saturday. So there's a second performance set as well.
And you're taking advantage of the new stage at the high school?
So they are, I'm actually not involved anymore, but you people, yes, they are, they're using that beautiful space.
So you want to come, if you want to see them, you're not going to the Odison, you're coming right here?
Yes, no more gym.
That's great.
A lot of joy.
That's great. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant 24263 dated 4/17/24 in the amount of $740,437.12. School committee meeting minutes for the organizational meeting and the regular meeting, April 11th, 2024, and a field trip for the National History Day competition. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Allison Ampe, seconded by Ms. Gittleson. Any discussion? Well, no discussion. It is a consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. That is a five-nothing vote, and it is unanimous. Subcommittee, Subcommittee Liaison Reports and Announcements. Budget, Dr. Allison Ampe.
We'll be scheduling a meeting soon.
Community Relations, Ms. Exton.
We will also be scheduling a meeting soon.
Okay. Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Accountability, Ms. Morgan.
We're actually not sure if we're going to have a meeting soon.
You run the best meetings. You should have one.
Well, yeah, we're, yes, we're actually trying to figure that out.
Okay. Mr. Thielman is not with us for facilities. Is there, do you know, Dr. Allison Ampe, if there's anything going on there? You're on facilities, aren't you? No.
Aye.
Okay. Policies and procedures. Mr. Carden is not here. I'm sure that there's work to be done there. The Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman is not here. Dr. Allison Ampe would probably know if there's something we need to know about.
Nothing that you need to know about.
Okay. We also have some sketches of plans for new seating for the room, which we'll share with you and get a comment on. Liaison reports. Anyone with a liaison report? Seeing none. Announcements? Future agenda items? We've received correspondence from Arlington High School student, and I just lost it. I
Alexandra Lay.
Alexandra Lay, there she is. Alexandra Lay wrote to us, they are looking to do a climate resilient schools coalition project, and possibly a resolution coming from us or them or somewheres, and they'd like to talk to at least some of us. So I suggest a subcommittee might want to play with that. So do I have a motion to deposit it into some subcommittee for discussion with this wonderful student?
Motion to refer this to the Community Relations Subcommittee.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Exton to refer to Community Relations, seconded by
Second.
Ms. Gittleson, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. That is a five-nothing unanimous vote. I'm sure that'll be joyous. Any other future agenda items? So next, we are heading towards executive session. So I will entertain a motion to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically for the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And as the chair, I so declare that it would have a detrimental effect to do that in public session. Motion by
We will return.
And we will return to public session after, after the executive session. And motion by Dr. Allison Ampe, seconded by
Second.
Ms. Exton. Roll call, Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative. That's a five-nothing roll call vote, and we are now in executive session. It is now 7:52. We are back from executive session. We are in open session. We have before us a proposed employment agreement between the Arlington School Committee and Francis Gorski, who would become our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations effective July 1st, 2024. The contract is before us. It was voted in executive session, and we are returning to public session in order to vote it in public. So the motion would be to approve the contract and authorize the chair to sign it on behalf of the school committee. Motion by
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Dr. Allison Ampe. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, abstentions. That is a five-nothing vote. It is unanimous. Dr. Holman, comment, please?
Sure. So thank you, Mr. Schlickman, and thank you, members of the school committee, and everybody in the Arlington community who participated in the interview process. We had, Mr. Gorski was among a few candidates that we interviewed initially, and then we brought him in for a final round, where he completed a performance task, met with the central office, members of school committee, members of the administrative team, and had an interview with members of the cabinet team. He has over 20 years of experience in public school finance, and was most recently the Chief Financial Officer for Somerville Public Schools. He brings a wealth of experience and knowledge about school finance to the Arlington Public Schools, and we're very much looking forward to all he will contribute to our system and our teams. He regrets that he wasn't able to be here tonight. He had budget meetings this evening himself, but I let him know that we would be sure to bring him back and have him share elements of his transition plan and get to meet everybody over the next several months. The contract has him starting on July 1st, and we will be definitely having him in sooner than that to take a look at things and get to meet the team and begin some of the work, and also make sure that Somerville has what they need as they close out the school year. So we're really excited to have Mr. Gorski joining us, bringing all of the knowledge that he will bring, and the team is looking forward to having him with us in July. So thank you so much for your support, participating in the interview process, and there will be more information to come.
On behalf of the committee, we thank everybody who participated in the hiring process, and we are happy with the positive outcome. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Dr. Allison Ampe. Everybody's smiling, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions. That is a five-nothing unanimous vote, and we are adjourned.